Good evening. My name is Tina Cersted. I'm a proud member of League of Women Voters Dakota County, and I welcome you to the Independent School District 196 Candidate Forum tonight. As always at our events, we would like to remind you that League of Women Voters Dakota County is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences policy through education and advocacy. We never endorse parties or candidates. And now, please let me introduce our moderator tonight, Lynn Lewis. Lynn is a trained moderator, an active member of the league, and a co-chair of the Voter Service Committee. We're honored to have Lynn moderating our forum tonight.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Dakota County, I'd like to welcome you to the first session of the District 196 School Board Candidate Forum. Thank you to the candidates for attending tonight. Would like to thank the City of Rosemont for providing the facility to hold the forum and for recording it and making it available to residents throughout the district. The recording will also be shared with Eagan TV and with Town Square TV, so it'll be available to all parts of the district. The district will also post it to their website, as will the League of Women Voters Dakota County. The League of Women Voters Minnesota and our local leagues conduct candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The league is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. League of Women Voters Minnesota and our local leagues post complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes. There are ten active candidates running for four open seats on the District 196 School Board. All candidates were invited to participate, and nine of them accepted our invitation. One candidate, Teresa Schleuder, had a conflict and was invited to submit an opening statement to be read at the forum, but one was not received from her. Unfortunately, another candidate, Craig Angrumson, who had accepted our invitation to participate, had a personal situation come up about two hours ago and cannot be here tonight. Because of the large number of candidates, we've divided them randomly into two groups. Each group will participate in a forum session lasting approximately 75 minutes. The same questions will be asked of each group. We will start the candidate forum with opening statements. Opening statements will be in alphabetical order. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening statement. Closing statements will be in reverse alphabetical order, and each candidate will also have two minutes for their closing statement. The order of answering questions will be rotated randomly among the candidates. Candidates will have a minute and a half to respond to the questions. We ask the candidates to respect those time limits. We also will have two lightning round questions, with answers being restricted to one word. Responses will be in reverse alphabetical order and alphabetical order. Please note our timekeepers. They have a yellow 15-second sign. There's also a stop sign that indicates you should conclude your sentence, so we can move on to the next candidate. Some of the questions asked this evening were submitted to the league electronically. They were reviewed by league members and edited for clarity. In addition, some questions were drafted based on topics of interest that the league identified in the community. Because of time constraints, we will not be able to ask all the questions that were submitted. This portion of the forum will conclude in 75 minutes. So let's begin with opening statements. The order for opening statements will be Sachin Isaacs, Corey Johnson, Gina Swainy, and Lori Ukeoff. Sachin?
Well, thank you and good evening. Thank you for having me on the panel. My name is Sachin Isaacs, and I have had the great privilege of serving our community on the board for almost the past eight years. As the first-ever school board member of minority descent, of a person of color, of age, an immigrant, and an English-language learner, it has been my honor to be able to serve the community and the stakeholders for 196. During my time on the board, I've had the chance to serve on the Equity Advisory Group, within the Budget Advisory Group, and a whole host of other councils as well. The key priorities for me going into this next term are going to be to restore the academic outcomes that we lost during the COVID pandemic, to close the achievement gap, to ensure safety and security in our schools, and last but not least, to have prudent fiscal management, especially in light of the recently passed referendum. Thank you.
Corey?
Hello, greetings, everyone. My name is Corey Johnson. I was first elected to the school board in 2019 and currently serve as the board's chairperson. This is my first time running for reelection. Thank you for inviting me to participate in tonight's forum, and a special thank you to the League of Women Voters of Dakota County for hosting this event. I'm running for reelection to the school board because I'm passionate about public education, and there's still work to do in our district. I joined the military at 18-years-old and shortly thereafter deployed overseas to Afghanistan. I spent much of that time building an educational infrastructure in the country for refugee children, and the experience really, truly impressed the importance of public education to our democracy, which is why I decided to continue into public service. The public educational system and our district as a whole is currently going through a transformation. District 196 recently approved a strategic plan, and we are building additional infrastructure as a result of our successful bond referendum. I'm running for reelection to continue to be a leader for our community with these initiatives. My wife and I have two children in the district. Wesley, my son, is going into fifth grade, and Gwendolyn into third, and professionally, I work as a product coach in the financial services industry. I appreciate the opportunity to address everyone today and to participate in this important discussion.
Gina?
Thank you very much. My name is Gina Swainy. Thank you all for having me. I am running for school board for the children, for the youth, for the young people, for the people who might not necessarily have a voice. I grew up, spent most of my childhood in kinship care. I did not have a lot of stability, and I recognize that those things can not only affect a young person in their schooling, but in their life. I have no doubt in my mind that, were I to be elected, I would do everything I can for the young people of this district in assuring that they continue their education, are lifelong learners, and learn to be the best that they possibly can be. I am very excited to live in a school district that is a destination district, despite the fact that I personally have no children in this district. It is a place I would have the joy, all the joy in the world, to have my children in this district, and I look forward to the opportunities to serve. Thank you very much.
Lori?
Thank you for having me. My name is Lori Erkile. I'm running for school board, and I would like to say, as a parent of three adult children, we attended, they attended Rosemont High School. Very productive children all across the board. One is becoming a psychologist, getting her PhD. One is going into law enforcement. One is working in this school district, so that's been exciting. And I realized after my kids graduated that my involvement shouldn't end in height, at graduation, that it's a lifetime commitment to the community. The community of Rosemont and District 196 should always be engaged. Parents, teachers, and staff all need our support. We have a main goal: teaching our kids to be productive, strong, and capable and confident citizens of society. I will work for a better classroom with improved education for our children and healthy environment for teachers and staff while encouraging productive relationships with parents. For that to happen, kids need to be allowed to be kids, and just that. The social ills and adult content should remain adult. Let kids enjoy childhood. It's so short. Let kids learn the basics: reading, writing, math, science, and history. With those simple things, kids can flourish. Kids can't fix what the adult content is, or they didn't cause it. So I would like to remember that childhood is a journey into adulthood. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now let's proceed to questions. The response order for the first question will be Gina, Lori, Corey, and Sachin. And the first question is, outside of running for or serving on the school board, in what ways have you been involved in the district schools and in the community at large? Gina?
Thank you. Well, as I do not have any children in the district, I have had to find ways to become involved with the community. I am still actively building, finding those opportunities and building my relationship with members of the community. I have tried to hear people's stories. I have tried to meet as many people as I can, listen to what they have to say, listen to their views, whether or not I agree with them, listen to why they have those views, whether or not I agree with that. I think that working together to build a safe community, which includes the school districts, comes from just being willing to talk to each other, being willing to hear each other, and being willing to be, apologies, being willing to say, "Let's agree to disagree." So I try to meet as many members of the community as I possibly can and hear their perspectives, what they have to say.
Thank you. Lori?
Yes. So outside of running for the school board, I've been, I was involved in elementary school. I was on the PTO board. I was always involved in volunteering as, in elementary. And then in middle school, my kids were on the swim team, and of course, I always helped in the classes. My son is on the spectrum. Both of my daughters had speech impediments, so I made sure I was involved and always engaged with the teachers. And it was always a great experience with all the teachers through their entire career. I also started getting involved. I went to my first school board meeting after high school, and it was quite an eye-opening experience that I did not participate, and I should have when the kids were younger. So I, my daughters were in swimming, and then through high school, I did events and fundraisers. And then after that, I continued going into the community organizing and also did fundraising and events. So, and I also work in sales for a local store in Eagan. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey?
Thank you. Outside of being on the school board, I served in the military for 14 years as a military intelligence officer, which, like I said earlier, really started my passion for public service and serving the community. Helping veterans, especially disabled veterans, is another passion of mine. So in the community, I also co-chair a military veterans affinity group, and we're very active in the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon community as well. I am the district director for the Minnesota School Board Association, representing all school boards in Dakota County. And outside of those professional organizations, I spend as much free time as I can, in between all of that, volunteering at my kids' school.
Sachin?
Awesome. Thank you for this. I came to this country back in 99 with not a whole lot of anything. You know, my first 10 days, I survived on three hot dogs for $1 at QuickTrip and $20 weekly grocery budgets for the first six months. From that journey to be able to now sit here, I've been a recipient of incredible generosity from this wonderful nation and its wonderful people. I have since then devoted myself to giving back to the community. In addition to being on the board, I have the privilege to be the chair of the CAP Agency Community Action Partnership. That agency helps provide senior nutrition, crisis homelessness care, crisis nursery, food, helping people who are facing food insecurity. It's incredibly meaningful to be able to help the community back, who was extremely generous to me in my journey as well. In addition to being the chair of the CAP Agency, I volunteer in my daughters' classes, Priyanka, who's in eighth grade, Ayana, who's in fifth grade, and speak at our schools as well. I'm often called on as a guest speaker or a contributor of sort in our classes and schools as well. It's an incredible privilege to be able to do all of these things, and I'm truly honored for each of these opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. The response order for the second question will be Corey, Sachin, Lori, and Gina. And the second question is, what are two to three strengths of which this district can be proud and why? Corey?
Two to three strengths? It's hard to pick just two to three when there are so many out there, but one thing that comes to mind right away is our fiscal responsibility. Our district, if you don't know, has received awards year after year for their fiscal transparency, their budget keeping, and their records management, and that's incredibly important to me as a board member, especially when we're talking about the very limited public funds that we get to educate our students and how we use those funds incredibly respectfully. Very proud of that. Another, in case anyone saw a recent press announcement, that District 196 was recently recognized as an employer of choice. That is not their first recognition. We get recognitions all the time in District 196 for being quality employers. And let me tell you exactly why I think that that's so important. It's because I firmly believe that District 196 is a district of choice, right? Parents, families, they do, they moved to this district to send their kids to school here. But it's not a district of choice because of the school board. It's not a district of choice because of me or any other leader, not even the administrators, right? It is a, it is a district of choice because of the teachers, the staff, those that make it, come in every single day investing in our children's education to make it a district of choice, and that's why I'm very proud that we win those awards for employers.
This is an incredibly easy answer for me. The number one and number two things in this order to me are an invested community. We don't pass the referendums that we do without a community that's invested. The fact that there are 12 people running for the school board is another testament of an invested community. The fact that we span about 160 square miles as a district talks about how unified we are as a, as a community. Unified because we believe in the value and the future that we can bring to our kids. It is an incredible sight, and I'm, and I know other school board members are envious of our invested community. Number two, passionate and compassionate educators. They make it work. They bring these dollars to life. They treat our children like their own. These are strengths of our, of our district and our community that really help us propel forward from an area of strength and an area where a bright future sits ahead. So thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
That was good. I have something similar. The test scores are the best in the state. Obviously, we want to work on that. And then the referendum that was passed, it was a pretty good referendum. We all agreed with it. It will bring a lot of change. I would like to see more in Rosemont. And so, and all the teachers, definitely the teachers. Like I said, my kids are out of school. Those teachers are still working, and they have always wanted to be involved, and they always replied immediately when I came in. Even when I came into conferences, they always liked us to be there and help us, and they always, like I said, wanted to help my kids and answer any questions that I needed. Thank you.
Gina?
Seems great minds think alike. We're all in similar veins. First, the community that is built around these schools. It is incredibly rich and diverse and growing in diversity. There are so many amazing people who just want to come be here, live here, work here, start their businesses here, grow and raise their families here. And of cour, and then the schools, the teachers, the faculty, the staff, and even the young people, because you, we have a, we have so many young people who are just wonderful and vibrant and ready to just spread their wings and fly, and the education and the foundation that they get from a destination school district like this one is really, really something.
Thank you. The response order for the third question will be Lori, Gina, Sachin, and Corey. And the third question is, where does the district have the most room for improvement? What policies or procedures would you like to change to accomplish these improvements? Lori?
Well, the Read Act that we passed will help with reading. I would really like to see that be one of the main things for us for reading. That's the foundation that we have to have before we work on our math, our writing, and our history. It's one of the basic that we need to work on. We also need to make sure that we keep parents involved in everything that is happening, because teachers need help. They always need support. We shouldn't be, parent, teachers are not, you know, punching bags, and we need to make sure that we understand what they need and participate and volunteer. So those are some of the things that we should probably add to the improvements that we have, and, you know, more involvement. I absolutely agree, more parent involvement, so they know what's going on. It has decreased over the years, and it's important.
Gina?
I, I think what you said is absolutely correct, Lori, in terms of the teachers needing, needing additional support. I also would like to see support for the young people, for more individualized education. This is not something that's going to happen right away. It's something that needs to be worked on, that needs to be figured out for each individual school, each young person, so that they can reach their personal potential, they can really focus on their educational goals while having the support of their teachers and their parents and working together.
Sachin?
Thank you. Very good question. I would say that the area which has the greatest room for improvement are, is the stubbornly persistent achievement gap that remains in our community and our school district. We absolutely need to continue to embrace policy that includes restorative practices versus punitive practices. We also need to make sure that equity remains and becomes a core competency as well. Closing the achievement gap is a big room, has big room for improvement. Secondarily, this wasn't the case earlier, but the pandemic has significantly eroded the years of, of achievement, of academic outcomes that we had, especially in areas of reading and math. That took a disproportionate toll on the students of our, of our district, and I, and I do believe that it is foundational for us to focus on improving and restoring that, because that is a launching pad. All types of improvements happen when you have reading and math scores higher than where they are right now. So those are two areas where I believe are our greatest opportunities. Thank you.
Corey?
Number one thing that comes to mind about where we can achieve is closing that opportunity gap, also known as the achievement gap. It's just, it's unacceptable today that we have different groups of students, minority students especially, that just are not graduating or doing as well at the same level as their peers, and we need to look what we can do to support that and close that gap. We need to ensure that every student, regardless of their background, their socioeconomic status, or anything else that could make them feel different or diverse, has the resources that they need to be successful in our schools. And then the other thing that comes to mind is literacy. I think we can do much better at literacy. I do think that recent legislation passed, the Read Act sponsored by Senator Aaron McQuade, will have a profound impact in us moving towards science-based reading and helping our students learn to read at an earlier age with better outcomes.
Thank you. Now let's break things up by going to a lightning round. Ask you a question that requires a one-word answer, just one word, no more. We'll proceed in reverse alphabetical order, beginning with Lori, and then going to Gina, Corey, and Sachin. Okay, the lightning round question is, do you agree with the state's new policy to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students? Lori?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Corey?
Absolutely.
Sachin?
Yes.
Thank you. So now we'll go back to our regular questioning. The response order for the fourth question will be Sachin, Corey, Lori, and Gina. And the fourth question is, the combined $493 million bond referendum that was passed by voters in May is the largest successful one in the history of Minnesota. How can you assure residents that you are qualified to oversee the budget and use the money wisely?
The, the role of the school board, just to be clear, is a role of governance and not management. It is important that that distinction be made clear. As a school board member, governance is critical to trust. The, the reason why 196 schools continue to be successful in referendums, because it is a tradition of trust. I absolutely subscribe to that tradition, prescribe to that tradition, and will apply that tradition in place to make sure that the efficacy in which we requested those funds is applied within the parameters of the bond referendum so that the outcomes we're in pursuit of are achieved. My role is to provide governance, to be involved, and to make sure that the efficacious application of these dollars continue to remain in place so that future generations are beneficiaries of the trust that we have been the beneficiary to receive thus far. Thank you.
Corey?
Thank you, and I completely agree, Sachin. The role of the school board is not to manage the budget. We approve the budget, but it's not to manage the day-to-day. So it's the role of governance and oversight. However, I think one, one way we can answer this question a little bit is even talking about just the history of this bond referendum, where we saw a facility need in District 196, and we wanted, we engaged with the community. We went on and talked to voters. We talked to families, and through that lens of talking to our families, we heard support not only for the needs that the district administration and the school board saw, but we heard need for other facilities as well. And that's why the bond referendum went from one question to two questions. It's because that the District 196, the administration of the school board goes out and listens and hears the needs of the community and responds to that, that's how we get the trust that we're at right now, and that's why we have such an amazing community that is there to support us every time we need the funding for a major initiative and to support our students.
Lori?
Oh, yeah. So as a parent, I have not been on the school board, so I don't know exactly how the government, governance works, but as a parent and someone who voted, I want to make sure there's frequent updates, and I would, would like transparency. That's what I'm, you know, assuming what will happen. I know it's a big referendum, and one thing I would ask at, as when I voted for that, that the school board can vote for that beyond for another 10 years, is that correct? I want to make sure I have that down, that, without voting. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but we just have to make sure that that frequent updates and the transparency to give everybody, you know, feel like they invested in the right thing. Thank you.
Gina?
Well, I think all of you had excellent answers, and like you, Lori, I have not been on a school board. This is my first time running. So I agree with the transparency, and I also believe in being open and honest where that money's going and... money's going and allowing the, the, the people of the district to have their voices heard in terms of where that money is put. And even just being open and saying, when you have, when someone is trusting you with a bunch of money, they can be worried that you're using it improperly. So I think that transparency is what's most important, and being honest with what that money could be used for, getting feedback on whether or not that's what we want it for.
Thank you. The response order for the fifth question will be Gina, Lori, Suchin, and Cory. And the fifth question is, endorsements of candidates for school board have become more commonplace in recent years. Could you please tell us by whom you have been endorsed and why you sought this endorsement? Gina?
I have so far, I believe it's gone through, been endorsed by the DFL for being a member of the party. I am actively looking for more endorsements from Labor Teachers Union and the, the organizations that look out for young people, those political organizations that have the young people in mind most. So those, those are the endorsements I am searching out because I feel like those are the things that are important for the young people, for my, my best ability to serve them.
Lori?
Hi. So I've only been recommended, I have not been endorsed. Some political action committees are probably Moms Liberty, which I know that is separate from everybody else. Some people in the Native American community and in the Muslim community that asked me to join and voice their concerns, that's why I'm running for school board. Also, probably the local BPOU of the District 56, so I've been recommended by them as well. And then Congressional District, too. That's what I've been recommended by. Like I said, though, we don't get endorsed.
Suchin?
I've had the privilege of being honored by our Dakota County United Educators, who are the teachers and nurses union representing 196. It's, it's an honor that they have trusted me to continue on in this position. I take this trust very seriously, and, and that is the endorsement that I have received thus far. Thank you.
Cory?
Similarly, I've only had one endorsement to date, and that is by our wonderful Dakota County United Educators that represent our teachers and nurses in District 196. Like I said earlier, our District 196 is a district of choice for a reason, and that's because of the people that make it a district of choice, our teachers, our staff, and our administration, and it is an honor that they have sought out, that they have heard my vision for the district and support it, and it is an honor to have their endorsement.
Thank you. The response order for the sixth question will be Cory, Suchin, Gina, and Lori. And the sixth question is, what do you see to be the difference between equality and equity, which should be a goal for the district, and why? Cory?
Great question, and a question I am personally passionate about, especially when these terms get confused. Equality is making sure that, especially in, in education, is making sure that every single student has the same resources to achieve. Equity is different. Equity is making sure that the students have the resources that they need to succeed, right? And there's a big difference between equality and equity, because what one student needs can be drastically different than what another student needs to make those same outcomes. I think the goal for other districts should be equity. That's the only way that we are going to go forward and close that opportunity or achievement gap, is by making sure that we're investing our resources, to making sure that every student has the resources that they specifically need to achieve.
Cory said this extremely eloquently, so I won't repeat it. Cory is a wonderful ally in this journey, and I'm grateful to have his partnership and his fellowship on the board. I too believe in equity, equity as a core competency as well, especially for someone who is a English-language learner, someone who is a immigrant and of, of a minority background. I absolutely understand the difference between those two, as explained by Cory, and I believe that our district ought to and does practice equity, and will continue to do so as long as I am part and have an opportunity to influence policy. Thank you.
Gina?
Well, Cory, that was very well stated, equality being everyone having the same resources, and equity being everyone having the resources that they need. I believe the goal should absolutely be equity, and I, I certainly see that from what these two gentlemen have said today, from what I've, I've seen in my research. So I think the district's done a lot of great things, and just keep on going forward.
Lori?
I absolutely believe in the equality portion of it. Equity is a different thing. It's going to be discussed for across the school boards, across the country, and it's very important to me, too, making sure no student is singled out or ostracized because of policy is of the must, most importance to me. If our policies demand that we favor any student over another, which for any reason is a broken policy, so if we're looking for diversity and equity inclusion, that's what I'm state addressing. Thank you.
So now we'll go to a second lightning round question. Remember, a one-word answer. We'll proceed in alphabetical order, beginning with Suchin, and then to Cory, and then to Gina and Lori. The next lightning round question is, do you support media specialists making the decision regarding which books are available in the school?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Gina?
Yes.
Lori?
No.
Thank you, candidates, and now we'll resume our regular programming. The response order for the seventh question is Lori, Gina, Cory, and Suchin. And the seventh question is, as a school board member, how would you respond to parents' concerns about what is being taught in or left out of classrooms? Lori?
That's really important to involve parents. Parents have been angry and not, and thinking that the school board purposely wants to keep them out. Parents also need to address the issues and their concerns with a level head and not get so angry, but they do have a right to be, to have concerns, but they need to work with the teachers and make sure that we know what's happening in class. It's very important, especially if, uh, teach, uh, parents are not sure if they agree as to what is happening in class, and it needs to be respected. So parents definitely have concerns, we need to address it, like I said, level-headed parents, and also board members that take their, into consideration, a serious consideration. Thank you.
Gina?
I think first and foremost, aiming to foster a stronger sense of community, like you were saying, with those parents, getting them involved, helping them feel more involved, and being willing to listen to their concerns. Why are they concerned about certain things being taught? Why do they want things that aren't being taught to be taught? And maybe figuring out a compromise of adding perhaps an additional class that isn't necessarily, that isn't required, but is an option for them to take. It's just an idea. So I think being willing to be open about that and figure out ways to work together and come together as a community for these young people.
Cory?
I think the number one thing that we can do is listen, and the number two thing I, I always suggest when parents have a concern is to come have a conversation, come have a conversation with the school board, have a conversation with your, the teacher. I have never met a teacher in 196, especially my kids' teacher, who does not want to talk about my, my personal kids' achievement, or the administration, the principal. Listen to what they have to say and what's really being taught. In my experience in having these conversations with parents that are concerned, the number one thing it usually comes down to is a miscommunication, right? I heard that this was happening, and then we talk and realize it was really this. I had a parent come to me with a, a couple weeks ago with a concern about a book, and I found the book, and I'm like, the page you were worried about isn't even in there, right? It's just a miscommunication, and I think that when we invite people to have those conversations, that's the best way that we can smooth out those miscommunications so everyone's on the same page.
Suchin?
I absolutely believe in having an integrated approach that, that takes into account parents as equal stakeholders as well. Let me tell you what I mean by that. As an example, last year, my fourth grader, Ayanna, was being taught basically some type of gender biology type of class. The teacher, two weeks before that was being taught, mailed out to all parents what was being taught, how it was being taught, and what will be discussed. Those are ways to include and seek feedback when those types of conversations happen. One of the things I'm incredibly proud about with, with some of the changes in the school board is, there are these things called community listening sessions. Coming to a school board meeting in a building somewhere can be intimidating, but when the school board is in the community, in these classrooms, looking to engage in a circular table, that's when we can create better communication as well. So I do believe that forums are being created, communications channels are being established, and like Cory has said, as well, getting involved through those channels, because at the end of the day, I'm not just a school board member, I'm also a parent as well. So I believe we're on the right path, and I believe that that's, those are the channels through which we can engage in productive conversations. Thank you.
The response order for our next question will be Suchin, Cory, Lori, and Gina. And our next question is, how do you plan to address the challenges posed by technology such as cybersecurity, AI, and digital privacy? Suchin?
Oh, my goodness, extremely, extremely relevant, and the answer is, if I knew how to do that, it would be done. We are chasing this. We're chasing this target right now. The ubiquitous and immersive nature on digital communication is incredibly difficult and challenging to keep up with. This is where we do need involvement from parents more than ever, because we need vigilance that happens in the home. We need to make sure that there is vigilance that happens, happening amongst others within the stakeholder community to raise your hand when you see indicators of these happening as well. This is incredibly important to me. We have lost precious lives in our district because of this as well. I am telling you, and I'm, I'm sure Cory will feel the same way, this is of, is of paramount importance. When we talked about safety and security, we're talking about these things. This is a key part of what we need to stay vigilant for and make sure others are sharing and bringing us into the loop as these things are materializing as well. Thank you.
Cory?
Yes, thank you. Completely agree with you, Suchin. If I had to pick, I said earlier, one of my top priorities is equity. If I had to pick number two, or just as up there, it's cybersecurity, right? We, I'm sure everyone's on the media, Minneapolis suffered a cybersecurity attack earlier. I learned, I saw in, in the news today that there was another one, I believe in St. Paul. This is happening all the time, and public school districts are the target of these cybersecurity attacks. And just like Suchin said, when we talk about safety and security, when we were talking to the community about the bond referendum, this was a big part of it, because we protect our students' information, our staff's information, all of the information that we have, and we need to protect our digital assets. As far as things that we can do, I've, we've already been having conversations about addressing our digital infrastructure, partnering with organizations such as CISA, which is, they offer, they're a federal organization that offers free resources to cybersecurity, public institutions like school districts that can specialize in school districts. These are a lot of the things that I think we need to do and have been doing, and we can, need to continue to invest in our cybersecurity infrastructure.
Well, they've pretty much said what I think is well. I don't know how to expand on that. I mean, it is a big deal. It just came and hit us all at once, that all these different things, technology and cybersecurity, one thing at home is how to keep our kids protected and know better. You know, we're losing our humanity when it comes to these things, AI, all these things that are being brought up. So we have to make sure parents are involved. Those things can affect kids in a totally different way, and we need to make sure the kids are looking up, looking, learning how to trust people. So that's cybersecurity. It, it comes, it's so, across so many different things that we need in that. But, you know, I don't know everything that's going to be happening in, through the school board and the referendum, but I absolutely agree with this one.
Gina?
Once again, for four for four. I, I absolutely 100% agree, especially what you said, Suchin, which was, we're really just chasing it. The, the advances in technology since the 1880s has been massive, and in the last 10, 20, 30 years, it just seems like it's exploded in a way that it hasn't since the 1880s. So I, I agree with what you said about having parents, working with parents, to make sure that we are keeping young people safe, we are keeping the information, their information and the information of faculty and staff safe, and also finding ways to better recognize when those are becoming issues, because sometimes they can just sneak up on you.
The response order for our next question will be Lori, Suchin, Gina, and Cory. And our next question is, what differentiates you from the other candidates and/or board members?
What differentiates, differentiates me from, I haven't been a school board member, I haven't been a parent within the community, I mean, with students, as my kids were students, but I'm also still involved in the community with a whole bunch of other areas. I realize that I'm a lot more conservative than the other ones, but I think I bring a lot of different ideas to the table. A lot have been on the school board for a while, so, you know, they still have their ideas, but sometimes it's good to bring new ideas, and I think that's important. Doesn't mean that they have, but it, I mean, they'll teach the way, but it's always good to bring in new ideas. Sometimes you get stagnant, and it's important, so that's what I think. Thank you.
Suchin?
Thank you for this important question as well.
My perspectives as an immigrant, a person of color, an English-language learner, and a person of minority descent, along with being a parent with kids in a district, ultimately helps me give a different perspective to topics. It helps me see things uniquely when I've harnessed all of those things together, and it's a reflection of a big part of our community as well. That ability to see policy through those lenses helps create a diverse point of view that isn't better or worse, but it is unique and represents a unique perspective as well. I believe harnessing this, along with my almost eight-year experience on the board, has helped me contribute to our conversations, to influence policy, to influence application of policy in a unique and, and value-added kind of way. That is what I believe differentiates me, and that is how I contribute to the board as well. Thank you.
Gina?
Thank you. I don't have children at all. I don't have a, a personal stake necessarily in this school system, excuse me, but I choose to be involved because I do want to improve the experiences for the, I believe, 30,000 approximately, young people in this district. And that's really the lens I'm coming from, is how can we make this best for the young people? How can we help, what can we do on our end to make sure that they are succeeding in the way that is most important to them?
Cory?
I'd say what differentiates me from other candidates is my long history and passion for public service and public education. Serving as the current chairperson of District 196, and my- 196, my four-year history serving on the board has given me, just in those short four years, quite a lot of history to understand how things work for some turbulent times over those four years. Also, I'd say my advocacy efforts for public education, both on the Minnesota School Board Association, as the director for Dakota County, and my personal advocacy at the Capitol, advocating for public educational policies and adequate funding for our public educational systems. Lastly, I would also say what differentiates me is that I'm a parent with two kids in elementary school, and I'm a professional coach, which helps me a lot as I'm navigating some conversations with our stakeholders.
And now we've arrived at our last question, so you can breathe a little bit. And the response order will be Gina, Corey, Suchin, and Lori. And our last question is, what role do equity and diversity play in public schools? Describe how you would provide a quality education for a diverse student population. Gina?
I think equity and diversity strengthens schools. I think that having many people with many different backgrounds and opinions and experiences can be the beginning of just amazing, whether you want to call it progress or what have you, so long as everyone's willing to listen and hear the things that they might disagree with, and be willing to work together to find a compromise. For the, I would strive to just make sure that all of these young people know that they are welcome, and that their experiences are valid, and that, and not just the young people, the parents as well, that what they have to bring to the table, I'm willing to look at, I'm willing to listen to, and I'm willing to work with people to make sure that, again, these young people are getting the education that they know is going to help them succeed in life.
Corey?
I'd say equity and diversity play a huge role in public education. And I'd also say one thing that I feel like is missing from this question is inclusion. We need to also ensure that our schools are welcoming to every single student, every single person that sets foot in our school building, regardless of their background, the color of their skin, or anything that makes them diverse based on their own personal life experiences. How I think we can provide that, or start to at least do better, and we have made a lot of progress, but we still have a lot of work to do. I think about progress that we've made in starting our Equity Advisory Council, so that we can get input from teachers, students, stakeholders, parents in the district about how we can be better, because we don't know everything. That's why we have to go out there and listen for solutions, and listen to a lot of solutions from those that are living it every day. Standing up our equity department and having a cabinet member join the superintendent's staff as an equity and inclusion director. I think these are all things that we can do to start learning how we can make more progress at closing the opportunity or achievement gap, and ensuring that all of our diverse student population has the resources that they need to achieve.
This is a very good question. I'll also start with what Corey was going, is I do also believe that the word belonging is missing here. I am perhaps a living example right here about the pursuit of an American dream. I aspire to that opportunity for each and every one of our students, regardless of where they came from. Diversity is not just the strength of our community, it's the darn strength of our nation. It is what makes us great. It is what will continue to make us great. I do believe that diversity isn't something that we should assimilate and whitewash. We should celebrate, honor, respect, and harness that power. We are a diverse community, and unless and until we don't acknowledge and honor that, we aren't unleashing the potential that sits within each of our students. We need to make sure that our practices are in commensuration with that spirit, so that each and every one of those students can aspire to get what I did and way beyond. So I couldn't agree more with that, and I could not preach more for the inclusion of the word belonging within the statement as well. Thank you.
Lori?
I agree with that. The area, District 196, is gone almost 30, it's up to 30% ethnicity. So that is important. Diversity is absolutely important, and it needs to be respected. It's one of those things that other kids across the board should not be ostracized for whomever or whatever they are, and respected. But everybody's opinion and how they grew up also needs to be respected. And since we are becoming so diverse, that it'll be a great thing to learn what other people are, or what they do, and how they think. So we have to remember that everybody is important, and they are kids, and everybody should be included. Kids are kids. They should be included.
Thank you. And now that brings us to closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes, and they will be given in reverse alphabetical order, beginning with Lori, and then on to Gina, Corey, and Suchin. Lori?
Well, my closing statements are, I realize I don't have as much experience. Since I was a mom in the district, I, of course, have participated, and I know that I need to make sure I participate in the community, and know the referendum is spent properly, and keep everybody accountable, make sure parents are supported and teachers are supported. It's very important. Safety is a big concern of mine. I never had to worry about safety growing up. Kids, having safety is most important. Teachers should have it, staff should have it, kids and parents need to be comfortable with their kids, little babies going to school and know that they'll be coming home. That's the most important thing, and I appreciate the time. I know I don't sound like everybody else, but I've enjoyed every moment tonight. Thank you.
Gina?
Well, thank you all for having me as well. Again, like Lori, this is my first time running for the school board, and I also have no children. There are quite a few things that might make a voter be like, "Well, why does she care?" And it's because I genuinely do care about young people. I look at the supports I should have had when I was younger and struggling that I did not have, and I recognize how lucky I am to have the supports that I did. So my main goal is to just find, help these young people find the best way for them to live their lives, and to really be willing to work with other people that have different views, and be willing to open their minds and learn. I agree with Lori about the safety of young people and the teachers. So though I do not have any children personally to worry about, I worry about the safety of young people in our schools constantly. And so that is why I'm here, and I am glad you all have had me.
Corey?
Thank you, and thank you again, as I close. I'll keep my closing statements concise, but thank you to the League of Women Voters again for hosting this nonpartisan forum. This type of public engagement is so important in our democracy, and I'm really honored to have been a part of it. I would humbly very much appreciate all of the voters, your vote here on November 7. If elected to continue my service on the school board, I plan to prioritize safety and security, closing or making significant progress, closing that opportunity gap, and fiscal responsibility and transparency. Again, if anyone has questions for me, I'm always open to have a conversation. My contact information is on my website, cory4196.com, and I'd be happy to have a conversation with any constituent, any voter, any family of District 196 that's out there. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I'd humbly request your vote on November 7.
Suchin?
I want to first start by thanking the League of Women Voters. This is incredible, and I'm grateful for this opportunity. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that this is an example of why our community works. We have diverse perspectives on what to do, but not one person said something bad and personal about somebody else. This is an example of civil discourse. Lori and Gina, I came in here not knowing you both. I walk out with tremendous respect for each of you as well. This is great. This is great to see engagement in this fashion. It's great to see that we're fighting for the future of our students, our kids, and our community as well. As I shared earlier in my statement, it has been my honor to serve as your representative on the school board, and I humbly ask for the opportunity to continue in that servitude for the next term as well. Thank you again, and thank you for considering me for your vote on November 7. Thank you.
The League of Women Voters Dakota County would like to thank everyone for participating in our forum. Thank you, candidates. We especially would like to thank the candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and being willing to serve our community. Remember, this is only one part of the District 196 Candidate Forum. Please tune in for the second part. Just to let you know, the League of Women Voters also researches issues that are important to our members and to the health of our communities. If you're interested in finding out more about what we do and how you can also make a difference, please visit lvdakodacounty.org. You can find more information about voting and candidates at mnvotes.org and at vote411.org. Again, thanks for viewing, and remember to vote by November 7. Thank you.